City Clerk, can you call the roll?
Councilmember Baines, Brandau, Bretafeld, Capriolio, Chavez, Soria, and President Olivier.
... by Pastor Gary Hensley of the Calvary Worship Center. And after that, we'll turn and pledge allegiance to the flag. Welcome Pastor.
Thank you. Will you bow your heads with me? Our God and Creator, we thank you for your abundant blessings to our lives. We thank you for life itself, for our families and loved ones you have surrounded us with, for the measure of health we enjoy, and for the strength and intelligence to do what our hands find to do. But most of all, we thank you for your boundless love to us. In the Scriptures, you have said that we ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established them for us to have peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our city council as they meet this day. I pray you will give them wisdom to govern in the trying times we find ourselves in. I pray you give them clarity to understand the needs of our people. I pray that you give them the fortitude to do what is good and right for our city, and the humility to work together to achieve it. I ask your blessing on this session of our city council. In your most blessed name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose liberty and justice all. Thank you Pastor Hensley again for your prayer. All right, at this time, we move to approval of the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to today's agenda?
The only change I have is item, excuse me, the 1015 item on page 11 of the agenda is being pulled by Council President Olivier.
Okay. City Manager, Mayor, the Mayor and Chief of Staff are aware that that's removed. There have been some council members that have approached the Council President to request more time. We need a lot of time on this one. Time, time, time. At this time, the Chair will, if there are no further changes to the agenda, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Member Capriolio, and a second by Member Brandau. The screen is clear. Let the record reflect that the second was made by Member Baines, please. Gentlemen, gentlemen. The screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. At this time now, we move to ceremonial presentations. We don't have any. We move to approval of minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of February 2nd, 2017? Okay, at this time, the Chair will entertain a mo, oh, Member Bretafeld.
Yes, on page seven, this is for the City Attorney. At the bottom, it says, this is again regarding the rental housing inspection. It said, "Councilmember Baines stated for the record, there would be no violations of the Fourth Amendment from enforcing the proposed legislation as written pursuant to the City Attorney's explanation." Just wanted to ask you, City Attorney, whether you in fact feel there is no issue at all regarding potential Fourth Amendment violations? Because I didn't hear you say that. I heard it interpreted that way. So I just thought it'd be a good opportunity for you to clarify.
The intent of my opinion, the question asks, is it legal to do inspection warrants? And yes, under the Fourth Amendment, if we follow the right procedures, it is legal to do inspection warrants.
Okay, but there is a possi-
That was my sole intent, was to answer that question.
Okay, is there a possibility that there could be people who sue the city over this, citing Fourth Amendment violations? That's all. We don't know whether there will be, won't be, I just-
There is that possibility.
Okay, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. The screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The minutes are approved. At this time, we'll now move to Councilmember Reports and Comments. Member Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to request that today's meeting be adjourned or closed in memory of Fred E. Clark. He was a constituent of my district, and I want to give my deepest condolences to his wife Roz Clark, that we all know, and their family and friends. Our prayers and thoughts are with them. Also, I wanted to thank Oasis for inviting me to say a few words at their open house yesterday. This event gets bigger and bigger every opportunity they have to have an open house, because it's a group that has a passion, a true passion, for taking care of people. So what is Oasis? It's an adult daycare that specializes in Alzheimer's and dementia care, and they offer therapeutic activities for seniors, and that allows the caregiver, this is critical, that allows the caregiver a much-needed break. So I encourage anyone that's taking care of a loved one to look into the program. It might be helpful to you and your family. Last but not least, congratulations to our Fresno Airport, District 4, of course, reaching yet another historic year of passenger traffic. So thanks to Kevin, his team, and all the hard work they do for FYI, as well as our community. So thank you very much, Council President.
Thanks, Council President. I'd like to also ask that we adjourn in memory of Joe Williams today. As many of you are aware, he passed yesterday morning. Been very ill for a long time. Joe Williams is clearly a legend in our, in our community. The first African-American elected council member to the city, widely recognized for bringing EOC, the Fresno County EOC, to the status that it enjoys today. Much of that was attained under Joe's leadership. So just want to make sure that we adjourn in his memory today. Details of the services are forthcoming.
I believe, a member of Baines, that he was elected in 1977, and he served two terms. So he was a real groundbreaker, trendsetter, and he will be missed. He will be missed.
He's been honored in the African-American community as one of the original trailblazers. So he'll be sorely missed, and we know that obviously, he was definitely someone that this community owes a great deal of gratitude to.
Yeah, I too want to mention that Mr. Williams was a tremendous man. He represented this district. I walked to his house many times, and he gave me tremendous counsel, and he was truly a trailblazer and a leader in our city. And he will be sorely missed, and made tremendous, tremendous contributions to our city.
Thank you, Councilmembers, for your comments. At this time now, we'll move. Member Brandau.
I didn't realize we were moving through them so quickly. Council President, I just wanted to thank a couple people for helping me throw a successful District 2 community meeting. The other night, we had, well, especially want to thank my Chief of Staff, Lindsey Barsamian, that put it all together. It was fantastic. But we had Scott Mosher from Public Works that talked about traffic and safety operations that are happening in Northwest Fresno, as well as Captain Burke Farah from the Police Department, who did a little overview on crime and Neighborhood Watch and the Nextdoor app, and really brought our citizens up to speed what's happening out in Northwest Fresno. So I wanted to thank the City of Fresno for helping me put together that community meeting.
Thank you, Member Brandau. At this time, we'll move to the consent calendar. Are there any councilmembers who wish to remove items from the consent calendar?
Item 1C.
Okay. Member Bretafeld.
I'd like to remove item 1A, 1J, and 1M.
Item 1A, 1J, and 1M, as in Mary?
Yes.
Okay. Member Brandau?
Move item 1B, please.
Okay. With that, the screen is clear. Let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on any item that's contained on the balance, or actually, any part of the consent calendar? Please come forward. Thought I saw somebody wave their hand. Okay.
I anticipate there will be comment on the items that have been pulled, but I assume that your request right now doesn't apply to those.
No, I think we take public comment on the entirety of the consent calendar at this time, so that way, we don't have to continue to go back out for each item. So if you do have a comment on any of the items, including the ones that have been pulled, you're welcome to speak to that now.
Well, actually, I think there'll be some other folks who'll want to have something to say, at least potentially, so I'd be requesting that you put this over to 1:30 to make the, specifically, 1A and 1B, so that people can be here to be heard on that. Obviously, we didn't anticipate this, and so there's an issue about which we're concerned. So that, and my understanding is, they are now no longer part of the consent calendar. So when you do vote, they will not be included. So we want to have an opportunity to speak before they are, before you do vote on them, now that they are no longer part of the consent calendar.
Well, I do thank you for the request, but in the light of the fact that we had two and a half hours of public comment on these exact agenda items a week ago, we'll go ahead and just continue to hear those pulled items right now.
Well, in that case, you better start my three minutes.
You got it.
And I have to say-
Just start her time over again, please.
Yeah, really. Thank you. I do have to say, since this was so thoroughly discussed, I actually would like to reserve my comments until after I hear what it is that Councilmember Brandau and Councilmember Bretafeld intend to offer that is new and different from what they expressed at some significant length when this came before the public on February 2nd. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait, and when I've heard from them, then I will resume my comments. I'll reserve the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the city council on any item contained in the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the dais. And the first one we had, I think it was Member Chavez, and you pulled 1C, is that correct? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on the balance of the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. The screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent, the balance of the consent calendar has passed. We now move to the pulled items. We start with 1C, Member Chavez.
Mr. Mosher? It's been a long time coming for this, this specific project. I just wanted to get a timeline on what timeframe we're looking at for the expansion of the street, and then also the streetlight that was a component of this project. What are we looking at timeframe for this? Scott.
Good morning, Council. Scott Mosher, Public Works Department. Just want to update you on this. Kathy Rodriguez and our real estate team, with this parcel, they've successfully secured all the necessary right-of-way except for the Gallo property, and we're in good negotiations with Gallo right now. What's then occurring is, once we have all the real estate, I'm sure you'll recall there's a PG&E overhead line along that area. PG&E needs the city to obtain all the right-of-way before they can move their overhead lines up to the north to make room for the second lane. So that's, that's a several-month process. What we're looking to do is, if we can successfully obtain the Gallo property, then we'll have PG&E move, and then it would be spring 2018 construction for the street widening, and also for installing the traffic signal at Belmont and Sunnyside.
So the street widening part will come first, and then the, the street signal? Or what's the?
We would bid that and award it all as one project.
Great. Okay, motion to approve.
Second, since it's contiguous to my district. Member Chavez.
The screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay, thank you. We move on to the next item, which was pulled by, who went second? Was that Member?
I think it was me.
Member Bretafeld?
Yeah.
Okay, you want to start with 1A?
Yeah.
Okay.
Question I have, and it's for staff, maybe City Manager. We had an initial staff report, and then it was a corrected staff report. The first staff report alluded to an annual registration fee, which was obviously new. I don't recall seeing that, and so I was just confused. How did, that, there is no registration fee?
There is no registration fee. What happened is basically, in this day and age of electronic documents, the, a document that was previously presented to council was inadvertently uploaded in the granicus. So when it became, when we became aware of that mistake, we now, we replaced that with the document, the updated document. So it was basically kind of a combination of human and technology error.
Okay, so initially, though, I guess from this, there was a look at doing a registration fee and decided not to.
This is back in December, under the previous administration.
Okay, so there's no registration fee?
Registration fee.
Okay, I just wanted to clear, clarify that. And then also, in the inspection, if someone passes, it's a five-year, not three-years, as the staff report?
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure about that. And, and the performance metrics that you're looking at, they will come later, in terms of determining how well the program works or doesn't work.
That, that's correct.
Okay. Those were the only questions I had regarding that.
Okay, the screen is clear. Member Brandau, did you? We have to, we have to vote on it. We have to.
Motion to approve, item 1A.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Okay, the screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, let's vote electronically on this one. Can't all abstain.
Be patient. It's up now, folks.
Motion carries four yes, three no. Okay, moving on. You have the next item, Member Bretafeld.
Oh, this is regarding the comprehensive annual financial reports. Is there a staff person?
Item 1J?
Yes, item 1J. Yeah, the question I had just was on the investment portfolio that you have. I was looking at it, I think it's, let me see what page it's, doesn't say what page. But is it basically kind of a 50-50 mix in terms of, as I look at it, your equities, domestic, international, your fixed income, real estate? It's kind of a 50-50, equities versus fixed income?
That's close, Member. It's more 60% equities in total, and 40% real estate and fixed income.
Okay. I just was curious, because I know this is a retirement, and usually, with the retirement, it's a little less with the equity. I mean, obviously, your program is run fantastic. It's fully funded, it's terrific. I was just curious about it, just in terms of with retirement. Typically, with retirement portfolios, they talk about having less equity with the retirement, more fixed income, and I noticed it was a 50-50. I was just curious about it, and there's no criticism. I think you're doing a phenomenal job. Any thoughts on that?
First off, thank you for the boards, for your comments. Yes, typically, there are less equities, and it's something that the boards are actually discussing currently.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to move the item. It's just an interest of mine, and I appreciate it very much. Like to move the item.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, that, do you have one more, Member Bretafeld?
Yes, I believe so.
You had item?
Item 1M.
No, one?
1M.
1M is in Mary.
1M, yes, 1M.
Oh, Marlene. Question I have, and maybe it's for the City Manager. The purchase of this property, was that used for, with the Blasor property sale? So that's, was around $400,000?
The purchase, the purchase and sale agreement, it's for $420,000. We believe the net proceeds from the sale of Blasor will generate approximately 1.6 after we pay commissions and other related fees.
Okay, and in terms of getting that money back, because obviously, when we sold it for the 1.7, it'll be 1.6. I know there's a lot of people who want to use that money, police, I do. You're looking at, I think, for code enforcement officers, and we've done this with the Blasor property. The question is, will we get that $400,000 back? Because when you, as part of the successor agency, I guess we only get a percentage of it back, and maybe it's a question for Marlene in terms of getting a return on that $400,000. Perhaps you can speak to that.
The county does these calculations, but I think the, it will be around 25% to 30% of the sale price the city would receive back as one of the principal taxing entities. The sale proceeds are distributed among the taxing entities. So again, I think you would receive about 25% to 30%, and I expect you'd get that probably in the early summer.
In terms of the property, we purchased it for 400 and some odd thousand dollars. Is it estimated that we can actually get three times that when this is, when we do something with this? What options do we have with this property now that we've purchased it?
Well, of course, the purchase is before you, and today, that is the only action before you. And so the disposition of the property would have to come back to you for approval, but you have a range of options. You could retain the property and continue to use it as a public facility, or improve it with an additional public facility. You could sell it to the private sector or another public agency. And the City Manager did explain to the Oversight Board that the city expects to receive a proposal from High Speed Rail, in which they plan to partner with the private sector. But absent that, you could solicit proposals from both the public and private sector for a future use. And in those, in a proposal, you can seek a purchase price at market value, at appraised value. You can do any number of things, and as, as you know, following the receipt of proposals, you can negotiate further the terms before you award any particular proposal. So you have a wide range of options.
Now, the property that was sold before, where the city acquired the property and then sold it, is it, it's a similar property, and the city made, sold it for three times what the city actually paid for it, correct?
Yeah, the merchant lot, I think you're referring to, and I think that was about 1.8 million. So if, so we think that this property would fetch a higher price than frankly, what the appraisal is, which was 420, just based on the actual sales of that lot and other lots, yes.
Okay, so, you know, I'll move to past this, but I would be interested, since we spent $400,000 of Blasor property money that we want to use for police, code enforcement, and a lot of things, we wouldn't want to obviously lose two-thirds of it by selling it back at 400,000. In other words, if we resold it at the same price we bought it for, we would actually only get a third of it back. Don't, that's what she says, because the successor agency only gets a small portion of it, correct, Marlene?
Yes, your proportionate share among taxing entities, yes.
Well, okay, so I think we're, so when we decide to do whatever we're going to do with this property, of course, the value and the fact that we acquired it at appraised value compared to some of the others, like merchants, which went for above appraised value, what we will be doing is bringing back, at some point in time, we would be bringing back a proposal that would take into account not just the cost of the land, but maybe other value added.
Right.
That could come with a proposal that we would need to evaluate that added value as we would with any other transaction. As far as the, the amount of, the amount that comes back to the city, we bought it for 420, but you could also look at it, because we get, and I think it's closer to 21% to 25%. We bought it for 420, but we're going to get back about 100,000 or 120,000 coming back the other way. So net, we actually got it for like $300,000, but that's kind of inside baseball. But, so we'll see an increase in our property tax revenue as a result of the sale of this property, because they'll distribute that out through the repayments that we receive from the, from the county, through the disposition of these, these various properties. The actual 420 and what we have in it, and what we're going to do with this property going forward, is subject to further council review and approval, once we have a proposal for your consideration. And we are not even close to having anything. So we would recommend you approve the item, and then we will sit down with people who are interested and bring a proposal forward, and see what brings the best value to our downtown and our community.
Okay, like to move the item?
Second. We have a motion and a second, Council President.
Thank you. A motion and a second, and the screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, none. Okay, motion carries seven to zero. We move on to the next item. I think this is 1B, Member, Member Brandau, 1B. This is our asset.
Yeah. And really, Council President, I just want to, I wanted to go over 1B a little bit with the City Manager, and just verify that this is the asset that we passed in November, and if there's any changes, if you could highlight those changes, so, you know, that we would know what we're voting on today.
This pretty much mirrors the, the proposal and the concept that was, as the staff report indicated, that was brought forward by the Council President and yourself. The only difference in what is before you today, as far as the appropriation resolution and the position allocation resolution, is the Ombudsman. But other than that, it is indicative and reflective of what was brought forward in, I believe it was November or December of last year.
Okay, so with this appropriation, we're funding, if you break down between November's vote on asset and last week's vote on the inspection program, you essentially are creating a Department of Code that has two halves to it. One is proactive and one is reactive.
What we are creating is a division with, or a work team within code enforcement, who will focus solely on rental housing, or substandard rental housing property, combination of both. So this action today funds the, primarily funds the asset or the, more the reactive side of it. Some of the positions that are listed are just a transfer over, a permanent transfer of resources that are already in place under what we used to refer to as stop. So what the PAR provides for, and the appropriation resolution provides for, is those additional positions, the fund this work team.
Okay, so all of the interior inspection programming, which is more the proactive side, that hiring or that appropriation is just going to be done inside of this year's upcoming budget, is that correct?
It's part of this group.
Okay, so I just wanted to be clear, so when I vote to spend money today, it's on the reactive side asset, and then the proactive side, which we voted on last week, that will be seen in this year's budget?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, then I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second. Member Baines.
So initially, I was not supportive of this, as you remember back in November. However, since we do now have the proactive side, I think this makes a little more sense, so I can be supportive today. Councilmember Olivier changed my mind.
Thank you. All right, the screen is clear. Let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries seven to zero. We move now to the general administrat, or this is, yes, there is no general administration, so let's move to scheduled council hearings and matters. This is the general administration. How come I don't have that page?
Here's general admin, page 12.
Yeah, I want yours. All right, item 3A, approve a consultant services agreement. And this is personnel.
Good morning, Council Manager. We're here today to ask you to approve a consultant services agreement with Aon Risk Solutions, Inc., to provide- Solutions, Inc., to provide our brokerage services for the city's property casualty and workers' comp programs. Excuse me, we issued an RFP and received two responses to that RFP. Both brokers that responded are capable and are well-regarded in the insurance industry. It's going to cover all the city's property casualty, work comp, and all related risk exposures and expenses that we have and the ancillary insurance coverages that we purchase. Aon's proposed fees in the RFP were $150,000 per year for the first three years. The second proposer, their total fees would have been about $298,000 plus annually to begin with. So again, we asked the council to approve the consultant services agreement, authorize the personnel services director to sign an amount of $150,000 per year for the first three years, and options to extend the agreement for two additional years at $165,000 per year. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on the agenda item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Member Bretafeld.
Yes, staff, please. Question for you. So we're switching, you're requesting that we switch to Aon Risk versus Alliant, which we've been using, is that correct?
Correct.
And Alliant gets commissions, and that was part of your reason not to have them now?
Well, one, among many, I mean, we also checked references, but yes, when we checked at the, the commissions and the contingency fees and then the MGA and MGU fees, we found that the money that was, and those fees are then added back into our premiums, just as if you buy your auto, your homeowner's insurance in that fashion. So when we netted out all the fees, their, their commissions and fees were about $300,000 in the last year.
Can't we, the question I have, we're spending, I guess for three years, almost half a million dollars for this brokerage services. I think all, you know, any of us that have insurance for different things, whether it's home, cars, or whatever, we tend to kind of use the same insurance company unless we're unhappy with them. I know this is the city of Fresno, there's huge insurance services that we need. Are we changing our insurance, the companies that are insuring us for different things? Do we, the question really becomes, do, when we're satisfied with an insurance company and they're providing us good service, do we need to continue to have brokers go over our insurance and spend a half a million dollars every three years? When we know the insurance companies we like, we're comfortable with the insurance companies we use, do we need to do this?
We need the brokers one way or the other, either the expiring or the new broker. We can't go directly to an Ace or a Lloyds of London or a Zurich and purchase our policy. They end up going through brokers or agents, just as if on our own personal policies, we'd go to an independent agent or to a State Farm or whomever else that represents those individual companies. So we don't have the market ability to go directly to the large carriers with their accounts, as well as the expertise to really package it and the, and the capacity to go out with a billion-dollar property policy, which we have to hit the huge markets and then also all the layers. No one insurer will cover us. We've got multiple layers, probably 15 or 20 layers of insurers on our property policy alone, that we utilize the expertise of the brokers to market out into the worldwide insurance market.
Okay. Do most cities use, and I don't know if you know the city manager, or you know, I mean, do most, does every city use an insurance broker when they're contracting for insurance services?
I know of none that don't, and, you know, there was a long list of West Coast public entities that Aon utilized and utilized as references that we checked and got very good references in response to that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, the screen is clear. Let's vote.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Member Baines. Now the screen is clear, and let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, staff. Item 3B, this is Finance Department, consent and approval of a contract for food and beverage concession services at Chikchancy Park.
Good morning, council members. Mike Lima, Finance Director, Controller. Before you, this morning, for your consent and approval is a contract with, for concession services at Chikchancy Park between the Fresno Baseball Club and Professional Sports Catering, or PSC. With the expiration of the previous concession contract, a request for proposal was issued for the purpose of soliciting bids on the food and beverage concession service at Chikchancy Park. Upon receiving responses to the request for proposal, a committee made up of city staff and Fresno Grizzlies staff evaluated the proposals by reviewing the responses and meeting with the respondents. One proposer voluntarily dropped out of the process after the committee met with them. Subsequent to the initial review, the committee requested last, best, and final responses from the remaining responders. Based on all the information that was gathered during the process, the committee recommended that PSC be awarded the Chikchancy Park concession contract. PSC was able to demonstrate to the committee satisfaction that its focus on baseball concessions would enable it to execute operational, culinary, and branding strategies which would enhance the concessions experience at Chikchancy Park. As allowed under the terms of the request for proposal, the Fresno Baseball Club entered into negotiations with PSC to finalize a contract. The product of those negotiations is before you today. The contract has a five-year term, and during that term, PSC has committed to making 500,000 of capital improvements into the concession facilities. The agreement calls for PSC to be paid a management fee of 4% if gross revenues are below 3 million, and no management fee if gross revenues are above 3 million. PSC would also share an 8% of all net profits. Total value of the agreement is estimated to be 8.25 million over the term of the agreement. It is staff's recommendation that council consent to and approve the contract for concession services between the Fresno Baseball Club and PSC. We have representatives from PSC and the Grizzlies here today. They and city staff are available to answer questions regarding this item. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take this item out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the city council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll return it to the dais. We have a couple council members punched up, Member Baines, followed by Member Bretafeld and Member Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. And maybe these, probably going to be more for you, Bruce, because I came by the office to chat with you about this, but I didn't, you weren't there. So I guess I really am wanting to first understand what the difference between this arrangement is with our food service vendor and the last one. Because I can remember the last contract that was negotiated was, from my understanding, was, was not a very, did not have very favorable terms for either us or the ball club. So I'm curious as a comparison between this one and the last one.
Well, and I'm certainly going to want representatives from the Grizzlies to weigh in on this, but I think there's a couple of things. One, I think there's a belief that this particular concessionaire can generate a variety of product that may be more attractive and, as well as increasing the number of points of sale and just more efficiencies, which at the end of the day, generate additional revenue. This agreement also has a profit sharing component to it, and then I think the net, the biggest change is that the net percentage of commission, or not commission, but revenue generated from food and beverage sale is, is more attractive to the team because it's a, it's a greater amount than what is currently being paid by the, by concessionaire that we have at the stadium now. And I'll, if Derek or anyone else from.
Yeah, you can come on down, Derek.
Would like to.
And Derek, you kind of heard the question. I just, you know, we, we heard from, from our position here in city council over the last, you know, several years, how challenging the, the other food service arrangement was. It really, in some instances, you know, crippled the ability to, to turn a profit for the ball club. So want to know how this deal is better than the one that, that you'll be leaving.
Absolutely. And thank you, thank you for the consideration, and I want to thank the city also for the RFP process. I want to thank Mike Lima and Bruce and Renee Smith and Laura Rapp. The process was unbelievably easy, and we appreciate that. I think the easiest way I can answer that question is, are, to kind of give, you know, there's two types of agreements that we can enter into. Our previous agreement is what I would call sort of a traditional commission agreement. And in that deal, we get a percentage off the top line, and they pay that on a, you know, event by event basis, no matter what happened that night. So, and pretty low percentages compared to what we see out in the industry in, in a, you know, market value contract today. In, in those type of agreements, and I think to, to address some of the issues that, that you mentioned, when you have those type of agreements, what you tend to see a lot of is, if they got to pay a percentage no matter what happens that night, whether, whether we have a big crowd and make a big profit or we don't, it creates a conflict where we've got two companies, one's trying to meet their bottom line and the other is trying to, you know, have a good experience and, and make money. So it sort of creates this tug and pull for who's going to make budgets and who's going to make money. And unfortunately, what we see a lot of times in those type of agreements is, if the concessionaire on their side is not going to hit the bottom line numbers they need to, we start to, we start to cut and we start to get tight and we start to run things in a, in a fashion that, you know, isn't the best fan experience. And, you know, over the life of a 13-year agreement, then you start to get to the point where equipment starts to break and nobody wants to fix it. I mean, the concessionaire doesn't want to put any, any additional capital into the thing. And so those type of agreements become somewhat adversarial. I, I think Ovations did a, a better job the last three, four years as we went down the road. But the contract we're, we're proposing to enter into with PSC is a management agreement. And in, as Bruce noted, we, we have, the fee structure is more favorable for the club. And the other thing that we like about it is it gives the, the ball club a little bit more of the, I mean, more upside, and that gives us more decision-making abilities. The PSC guys are here today, Jason Wilson, our Regional Vice President, and our new Food and Beverage Director, Pat Day, are here as well to answer any additional questions. But in this deal, we see both sides of the P and L. We get a chance to, you know, really look at both sides, and it's our business, but they, they run it under that management fee. And, you know, they come in and they don't put their logo on anything, they're, they're coming in representing the Grizzlies and running this business for us. But they've been very clear from day one, it's our business and they're going to run it. And we think that that obviously creates less conflict. We have aligned divisions, their incentives for their staff are all based on top-line sales, so that we have the same objectives, which is grow attendance, grow per caps, and, and be successful together. So I think just the nature, and we, we love what PSC's doing there. They have the biggest market share in minor league baseball at this time, 29 teams in minor league baseball, three spring training facilities, all baseball at this point. And I think they've done, proven that they're, they're on the up, up and up in our industry, and we like that about them. And I think it's because they come in and work with the club and, you know, not that tug and pull that we, we've tended to experience.
You know, and, and thank you. That, that actually is precisely what I was kind of looking to hear, is the nature of the, the relationship. And it sounds like what you try to do is, is obviously get your concessionaire and the ball club aligned in the goals.
Right.
And it sounds like, you know, you feel like you've achieved that with this proposed agreement. And I'll, and so I'll tell you what I do like. I do like the fact that they, and their staff report says, I think they had 27, 27 clubs that they worked for, but I like the fact that they're all baseball. You know, I'm, I'm hoping that they, that they can expand it to other sports, of course, but that gives me some comfort, that they may know what they're doing. 27 other clubs around the country, I guess, I have some faith in them. I like, I'm glad you explained the, the difference in the relationship. That again is, in my opinion, a more positive agreement that the club can have with the concessionaire. So those are good things, and I think that's what I really was looking for. As you, as you know, Derek, we're big fans of, of the Grizzlies, and we want, we want the ball club to be successful. And over the years, you know, we, we've had our share of challenges together. So we just wanted to make, I wanted to make sure personally that I felt good about moving this, you all felt good, and this, and we were moving in the right direction with this concession, with this concessions agreement. So with that, Council President, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Yeah, just a quick question for staff. I noticed for PSC, they did $500,000 capital improvement. Many of the other proposers offered a million. You felt that the other benefits that they provided outweighed the half a million dollars in the capital improvement?
Well, the short answer is yes. The longer answer is that PSC originally proposed a million, but with a 10-year deal. After the Fresno Baseball Club entered into negotiations with PSC, they didn't feel an agreement of that length was perhaps the best fit. So in exchange for a shorter agreement, I believe they reduced the capital contribution. But all the management fee and the revenue sharing elements stayed the same.
Okay. And is there a representative from PSC?
Hi, welcome. Just curious, can you describe how the fans' experience, do you think, will be different with your operating the concessions than what's been going on the last several years with under Ovations?
Yeah. So we, we are baseball owners ourselves, so we know what the end result everybody wants, a good fan experience. And that's what we focus on as baseball owners. And the reason why we got into the food service business is because we couldn't find a food service partner that could, that had our interests aligned with them on providing that, that great fan experience. And that's how we've been successful in minor league baseball. So, you know, we work directly with the team and partner with them on, on every aspect, providing, you know, good quality products, value, the fan experience that, that we're, that we're looking for. And I go, we're really a guest service company is really what we are. We're servicing guests is what, is what we're doing. It's not driven by bottom line, it's driven by fan experience, and that's, the nature of our deal speaks to that. So I think the thing that they're going to see when they walk into the ballpark is not the, you know, the bottom-line-driven type of operation that they've seen in the past. They're going to see a guest service company, like, we compare ourselves to, you know, the same type of business that Disney does. Disney has the best guest service, you know, program in the world. That's what we want to model ourselves after, and it starts with presentation, it starts with, you know, the capital we're putting into the ballpark is going to focus on rebranding of the ballpark, you know, make, make sure the branding makes sense to a guest, you know, they want to walk up to a concession stand, they want it to look like a restaurant. So we want to brand it that way and, and offer products that you can find off of, you know, a restaurant-type menu, not just a plain cheeseburger.
That's what I'm asking you. Is there some way you can describe that? I mean, what the fan experience, and what will they see? Will there be something different that they see? How will they experience it differently? I mean, you're saying they're going to, but can you describe?
Yeah.
So people who are fans, the message goes out, hopefully through the media, that there's going to be something really positive happening and changing because of you coming in. Is there some way you can describe?
Yeah, so, you know, talking specifically about some branding concepts that we're doing that brings new products to the ballpark that they haven't seen. Outside of just the fresh paint and, and the branding and, and the look of the stadium, it's going to be really focused on, you know, exciting products. We have a Burgertopia concept, which is, you know, burgers loaded with toppings, you know, a barbecue pork burger that has pulled pork and cheese and, and barbecue sauce and, you know, not just a plain cheeseburger you can buy at the stand. So they're going to get, they're going to see the value in, in those products that we offer. Hot dogs, you know, that are on a great bun. Bun is, bun is probably the most important part of any sandwich. If you don't have a great bun, you're not going to have a great product. So having a great bun, put a hot dog on, and then top, load up the, the hot dog on top of that and have a, you know, just a great presentation product, good quality and the flavors that go with it, obviously tying in the local flavor as well to, to a lot of these products and making sure that, you know, that farm-to-table concept, you know, is, you know, we're, we're using that in our operation and, and creating exciting products. So even in our concession stands, I don't sell just a plain cheeseburger. I sell a signature burger that you buy in every grill stand in, in the, on the concourse. And another part of it is, you know, there's a big equipment need for this ballpark as well, to be able to execute these brands and, and create a different menu mix than, than what the fans have seen previously. We don't focus on, you know, a lot of outside vendors that come in and run our business for us. We know there's a strong partnership with a lot of, you know, local community vendors, which we'll, we'll continue to work with the team on, making sure that we still, you know, be a good partner with the community. But at the end of the day, well, I've got four grill stands that don't have grills in all of them. And I'm, so we're putting equipment in to be able to execute these products and provide great, exciting products and not just your concession, it's not a concession operation, it's a, it's really a restaurant feel to it that we want to bring to the ballpark. And I think that's what, you know, enhances the fan experience and, you know, I think when, when fans go to a baseball game, and minor league baseball is not about the product on the field, it's about the, the fan experience when it comes. product on the field, it's about the, the fan experience when it comes to the mascots and the in-between innings and the, and the food's a big part of that and, um, the guest service aspect of it. When, when most fans leave a game, they probably don't know what the score is and that's a good thing. You know, that means we're doing our job, the, the team's doing their job on providing a great fan experience, so.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. Um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Ray, thank you for being here and being part of our team at Fresno. We're looking forward to a exciting season, so thank you very much. But I wanted to talk to Derek for a minute too about our team. Could you come up, Derek?
Thank you.
And, uh, thank you very much, sir. All right, how you doing?
Great.
Looking forward to another great Grizzly season.
Yeah.
When's our opening day?
We're, we start, uh, April 6th is our opening night and, uh, it's the true opening night. We start at home this year. And this is also for some of you guys who maybe, uh, haven't been, uh, keeping track of the math, this is actually will be the start of the 20th season in, in Grizzlies history, going back to the inaugural season, 1998. So, uh, we're, in addition to our, our great, um, major league affiliate and we're expecting another great team here in Fresno, we're also getting a chance to look back the last 20 years and celebrate all those great players we've seen come through and all that great tradition that goes back to, you know, even another ballpark. So, um, it's gonna be a great year.
How's Tony D. doing? Coach Tony D., how's he doing?
He, he's doing great. He's, uh, he's back in Fresno. Our, uh, coaching staff changed up a little bit. We had some guys, uh, move up in the organization and, uh, Tony's excited to be back and, and win again. He, uh, he didn't like the way we finished the season last year, so he's coming back with a vengeance.
He's one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet, but one of the most competitive coaches in the league and it shows with, uh, his expectations and the performance of the team. So, and how about player personnel? How we look this year with, uh?
You know, what's, uh, what's exciting about this year is, um, the Astros have had this rebuilding process that's been going on since they started with the current ownership group back around 2012 or so. And, uh, you know, they dumbed down their, their payroll and got everything down to bare bones and rebuilt and they've got this, you know, like, cutting-edge, uh, player development system that is creating all these great prospects. Um, what we saw last year, in the last couple of years, Astros all of a sudden have gotten better at the big league level, faster than what they expected to, I think, in the, in the timeframe of what they thought it would take to rebuild. And, uh, so they were met with this clash of, you know, how many guys do we develop and send up to the big leagues and, and how many free agents and trades do we go out and do? Uh, and last year, they, they, they were, uh, competitive, but kind of, you know, didn't make the playoffs, uh, like they did in 2015. So their offseason was full of, uh, making trades for veteran players. They picked up a few veteran free agents. Um, and that, you know, of course, we want, we want these young kids to make to the big leagues and achieve the dream. We're not rooting for these guys to get stuck in AAA so we can win a bunch of ball games. Um, but you want them to go up when they're ready and be successful. And I think they were rushing a few guys to the big leagues last year that, due to injuries and whatnot. So, um, I think they've, looking at the Astros club and saying, hey, they've added a lot of veterans and, and, uh, and are saying that they're gonna contend and try to win that division. Uh, we'll keep some guys in AAA the appropriate amount of time, which bodes well for our club here in Fresno as well. So, um, everything I've heard from Houston is we're, they're expecting to have great big league club and one of the best AAA clubs they've had in a long time because there's a ton of competition in that minor league system and not that many jobs in the big leagues to take this year.
So, uh, national champions one more time with like 2015?
Let's do it again. I got 10 fingers, man. We just keep, we're getting rings, right?
I wanted to also tell you that, uh, last, uh, season, we did, uh, the first pitch. I'm definitely available for that. My colleagues were on the mound, but I think I threw the only inside fastball.
We've got the video to prove it, yeah.
So we're always available to support you. Uh, wishing you the best, uh, luck this season. You have a great team there to work with and, uh, uh, the Grizzlies are gonna do it again. And your leadership is greatly appreciated, you and Lance and the rest of the team. Thank you.
Thank you for all your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanna make sure I heard, I heard correctly, 'cause I wrote it down. Gentleman said burger with pulled pork on top, right? Is what, okay, got it. All right, I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, and, and, uh, let's do it. The screen is clear. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. Good luck to you.
Yeah.
Happy to have you here.
Derek, could you make sure that the fibrillators are all working before each thing?
Thank you. Okay. Um, at this time, we will move now to, and that is the end of general administration. We can go into closed session, we have some timed items, but Larry, are you here to address the council? Uh, where's Larry Huestead? Okay, there you are. Let's do unscheduled communication at this time, uh, and then we've, we're going to do public comment before we go into closed session. Then we'll go into closed session and come out for our 10 o'clock item. So at this time, sir, give us, uh, this is unscheduled communic- uh, give us your name and address for the record and then you will have three minutes.
Uh, Larry Huestead. My address is 8350 North Bond Avenue, District 6. I'm here today to speak about the article I read in the Fresno Bee back on, uh, January 16th of this year, and op- I'm in opposition of the move the big RV. The question I would like to ask the council members, how many of you own an RV? Show of hands. Okay. In question, I know that, uh, in the past, you had 72 hours if you parked your RV in front of your house in the driveway. Anything after that, it had to be moved or placed behind a five-foot fence. Is that correct? It is. Okay. Um, what I'm asking is I store my fifth wheel and pay a hundred dollars a month to have it stored in an RV facility out by the airport. And my wife and I are both retired. I worked for the Fresno Bee for 32 years. And we enjoy this, going RVing. And to bring it home, place it in my front yard and get it ready, there's no way in the world I can do it in 24 hours. That means if I bring it home at 5:00 in the afternoon, I have a 5:00 the next day to get it done. I have a 138-item checklist that I use, everything from refilling, taking the bottles over to get them refilled and propane, to making sure we have enough toilet paper in the unit. I am asking that, to make an emotion that if you could change this from 24 to 72, that would give me ample time to be able to do this. I know when I go to a lot of RV parks, what they do is when you check in, they will give you a tag that you put in your window. It tells them what, when you're coming in and the day you're leaving. If I could, if you had a system where you could go to your site of City of Fresno and fill out a, a permit by using my address and putting in the date that I will bring the unit home, and then it would automatically say 72 hours a day it has to leave, that would give me ample time to be able to get it ready and go on whatever trip we do. Because there's times that I'll be sitting at home and I'll, you know, on a week, Monday or Tuesday, and I'll say, "Road trip, where we going?" So I'll pick it up and I'll go, get it, bring it home, and takes four hours to wash it, then you gotta vacuum the inside of it out. I have a 35-foot open-range fifth-wheel travel trailer. Uh-oh. What's that mean?
Can finish your thought, the time's up, but go ahead and finish your thought.
So anyway, that's what I'm asking for. If you could, you know, rectify 72 hours over 24. You know, I've seen people parking their units longer than that. In fact, uh, one of them is the neighbor down the street and he's a Fresno PD. So anyway, I just make an emotion.
Well, thank you, thank you for this, council member, Brett Eiffel. Did you wanna address it since, um, he's from your district or, or, do you wanna? Okay, um, I guess, um, city manager, what, what's the, what, what did we do and what's get, update us as, as to what's going on with their RVs?
Well, I think maybe what we could do is we'll make arrangements to, for Dell Esterbrook to meet with you. Um, and we'll look at your situation. Your situation may apply to others. I personally have never owned, uh, an RV. I can tell you my father-in-law did and, and he had fifth-wheels trailers, 35-foot, uh, and being the son-in-law at the bottom of the seniority list, if you hear what I'm saying, I'm, I was the one who had to prep it. Um, so while I haven't owned one, I've certainly had to prep one, uh, for, for a trip. Um, so I'll make arrangements if we could get, uh, contact information and we'll sit down and go over, you know, the 138 items that you check off and maybe we can find, 'cause again, I, I'd be interested to see, 'cause I've done it myself. Um, and so we can maybe sit down and figure out if there's a, a modification or, and/or maybe there's a, uh, some clarification as to how this ordinance is going to be enforced. That might be helpful to you as well.
I appreciate your time and...
Brett Eiffel.
Yeah. Hi, sir. Uh, thank you for coming here and I appreciate the fact that, uh, you know, you feel that the 24 hours is not enough time. Do, do you feel, I mean, is it 48 hours that you're looking for? I mean, what is it that you're, that you're looking for?
Well, if I was your age, I probably could do it. At 70, it's pretty tough. But I, I would like to see, you know, the same amount of time that it is. Right. The reason I'm saying this, because I did get a courtesy notice, I had my unit parked in front of the house when we went to move it, about two days after we gave him back from a trip. I went to start my Duramax diesel and found out it didn't start because the fuel line sensor went out. And after $400 getting repaired and it took four days, apparently somebody in my neighborhood called. So I can ex, you know, contest to that. And when I called her, that's when she told me. At that time, I says, "Well, it was parked in the street, not in the driveway because of the size of it." And she says, "Oh, we don't have jurisdiction over the City of Fresno Street, that's traffic." So I can see that probably reading this article is because there is people that disobey it. They park their big fifth-wheels and their travel trailers and we had a neighbor around the corner that parked two little Volkswagen Beels. It was a rental on the street and those cars were there for over six months with stuff growing underneath and everything. I'd never do that. I'm proud of the area I live in. Yeah, well. And the school district. I don't know about that.
All right, and so you're gonna have staff meeting with this?
We, um, if you could put your phone number on that card, you'll get a phone call. We'll, we'll, we'll fix it, we'll help you out. 'Cause, um, you, there's others like you, I'm sure.
And I got one question for you. Tony Pascoe says hi.
Okay. Tony is the best. Hey, Larry, Brett, um, Brandow, you were punched up too.
Larry, I appreciate it. Um, myself and Councilman Capriolio co-authored that piece of legislation. And, uh, for me, and so really, I think different council members have different problems all throughout the city. Sometimes we have the same problem.
I recognize that totally.
What's that?
I recognize that totally.
Yeah. And in, in my district, one of my main concerns is we actually have people parking 18-wheelers.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that.
Right? Yeah, you've seen that. So what happens is, is we get this overwhelming number of complaints to do something about it. People feel like their neighborhood, they have friends and family coming in for different things and they don't, you know, so we, we made an attempt to address that. So I think we'll just revisit this and take a look at a way of getting you some help for your particular problem.
All right, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Put your phone number on that card and then give it back to our city clerk. That's all we need, we have your name and address and someone, we'll give you a phone call. Thank you for coming down this morning.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Is there anyone else who wishes to address, address the council on any item not contained on the agenda? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Well, this is actually pertaining to a city property. I am Quinton Hoskins, the president of the Mewks Home Museum. And I know we're not on for today, but I just wanted to tell you all thank you very much for your continued support of the Mewks Home Museum. And we look forward to seeing each and every one of your faces there, taking a tour. Thank you.
And there we go. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? All right, we love the Mewks Home. Um, so, uh, city attorney, you wanted to go out to the public before closed session?
Yes, on a labor item, we're required to go to the public before retiring the closed session.
Okay.
We have a closed-session item, uh, labor negotiations with Local 39.
Okay. Seeing no one from the public, we'll go ahead and move into closed session. 10:00 AM hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance from Public Works.
Good morning, I'm Andrew Bonnelli with the Public Works Department. This is a public hearing to consider annexation to Community Facilities District Number 9. It's at the request of the landowner. Uh, we have received the ballots, they're all in support, and the assessment is $2,152 annually.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion, oh wait, yeah, we have a motion by Member Brett Eiffel.
Second.
A second from Member Chavez. Let's go out to the public at this time. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll return it to the dais. The screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This one goes six, zero, and one. Okay, uh, let's move on to the...
Council president, is there an announcement on the ATP?
Oh, wait, there you are. I didn't see you, uh, Member Soria, in your chair. You looked, uh, I couldn't see you, 'cause you're sh- short in stature, but you have a big heart. Okay, uh, city attorney?
Is there an announcement on the ATP item?
Uh, yes, I do have an announcement, um, on the ATP item. This will return, uh, for concerned individuals, this will return to the council agenda on March 2nd, uh, at 10:00 AM. Thank you, city attorney. Uh, we now move to our 10:05 item. This is a hearing to adopt resolutions, an ex parcel. Uh, this is also, um, Public Works.
Good afternoon, this is a, uh, warning, this is a public hearing to consider annexation again into Community Facilities District Number 9. It's at the request of the landowner. We've received all of the ballots, they're all in support of joining Community Facilities District Number 9. The assessment is $2,052 annually and it's a public hearing. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This time we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll return it to the dais. We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seven to zero. All right, we move now to our 10... We're on our 10...
10, 10.
The 10, 10 item.
Thank you.
It's all yours.
Also, another annexation into Community Facilities District Number 9 at the request of the landowners. Uh, we have received all of the ballots, all in support. The annual assessment is $15,175 annually. There are several properties in, in this annexation. Staff recommends approval. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Wait, we go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll return it to the dais. We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a motion carries seven to zero. We now have a, this one is, was that the, that was the 10, 10 or the 10, 15? And we were, and I continued the 10, 15. Okay. So, now, we're done until 2:00, and we've already done unscheduled communication, so have a good extended lunch, and we'll see back at 2:00.
Maintenance costs, the question becomes, okay, well, of that, how much are we gonna have to spend to replace the assets that are going to be no longer, they're gonna be so deteriorated that they, they're at the end of their useful life in 10 years? So, we've looked at all of our assets, and we've estimated that number to be about $112 million. And again, I will repeat, this does not include maintenance and operations. We will be looking at maintenance and operations and bringing those figures to you as well, but we don't have them yet. So, as we, that's bucket one. Moving on to bucket two, this is, it's called sustainable, and that is, what if we look at some of the assets that we would just replace like-for-like, and instead we, or for this, we make strategic upgrades to adjust the asset to better match community needs? So, in other words, instead of replacing a waiting pool with a waiting pool, maybe we replace a waiting pool with a splash park, which is, you know, more broadly used, for example. Or what if we, you know, we've looked at the community needs around a lot of these parks, and we find that instead of a tennis court, we really need a basketball court? So, the second bucket will be presented to you. We don't have figures in that yet, but those are sort of strategic upgrades that would increase the relevance and the sustainability of that park asset over time. And then, bucket three is visionary, and this is, I think, what most of us think of when we think of parks investment, and that is investment in brand-new parks, whether it's a total scrape and rebuild of a, of an existing park, or if it's the acquisition of brand-new land and building new parks, facilities. So, that was really what we wanted you to be aware of today, and just by way of reminder, we're continuing with our analysis. We're still going to be, you know, allocating estimates to those buckets two and three. We're going to be doing maintenance and operations, financial analysis, and an amenity gap analysis, which is looking geographically at where the amenities are and where they need to be. And then, we are continuing with our outreach. We have a stakeholder, series of stakeholder meetings coming up, and then, one community workshop in the later part of April, we think. And then, of course, the Parks Master Plan will be before you. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and there are many of us here, so we'll get you the best expert for the question.
And so, let me add to Sophia's comments. The reason we're bringing this forward to you today is before we go out into the community and continue the conversations that we've been having, we thought it would be important for you to know what this number is, because this number will potentially change the dialogue around the priorities and the capacity and the ability to meet all those priorities that the community believes are important. So, for example, if you take that $112 million today, you project forward over the next 10 years, it's probably close to $130 million. You amortize that over 10 years, that's $12 to $13 million that needs to be found or allocated just to maintain what you already own. This is before you add a splash park to an existing community park or even build anything new. The other part is, is once you build or add, say, a new park or a community center or a splash pad, your lifecycle costs, that $112 million over 10 years, or $12 million on an annualized basis, goes up, because now you added another asset that has to be replaced. So, as we go out to the community, we want to be able to temper the expectations and the reality of the community, who also will want to and have, on any given Thursday, asked us to go build more parks, because there is going to be a reality check, and I talked about this a couple of weeks ago, as to what, not so much this organization, but what this community is willing to support, potentially. And as we go forward, rather than going out and having workshops where we talk about, "Well, I'd like a new park," or "I'd like you to build a community center at this park," or "put a splash pad," or "a BMX track," or all these other additional amenities that folks are asking us to provide, there's got to be a conversation around maintaining what we already own. And this is true for all the assets that the city owns. We had this conversation about parking garages. We've had this conversation about convention centers. We've had this conversation around the municipal service center. We've had these conversations, but until today, we haven't had the conversation around what it would truly cost to maintain what we already have. And so, we wanted to present this information, because as you go out into the community, we didn't want you to be caught surprised by what I think is a pretty substantial number. And how we deal with that is still subject to further dialogue, but it is, to me, it changes the narrative or changes the conversation with the community when we're out there, because there's gotta be a recognition of this expense, because as I said before, this is a real cost that this organization has chose either to ignore or not acknowledge in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, for that, and thank you, Sophia, for the information that you presented. I do believe that it is important to know what these numbers are, so that we are realistic. We obviously heard it's a substantial number in terms of reporting, but I also, I just want to say that I don't want the community to not be able to envision, you know, what our park system can be. I think that the community shouldn't be discouraged. So, I, you know, while we want to be realistic, I don't want to discourage the community from having a great vision as to what our park system can be. I do believe, though, that it is fair to bring these issues up, and that as a council, we discuss, how are we gonna create a priority within our existing budget? Because I think that there's room there. I've been, you know, a strong advocate for parks. And then, also, what is the community willing to do and put their part, so that we do get to the place where we do create that park system that we all envision? And so, looking obviously at the funding sources is gonna be a conversation that we must have here on the dais, as well as with the community. There are a number of things happening, not only here with, you know, the Parks Master Plan and so forth, but also at the state level, as they look at other state sources of funding that this, that this community may be able to benefit from. So, I do appreciate those numbers. One question that I did have, in terms of the O and M numbers, when will we get this? Are we gonna get kind of a progression, a report with these numbers, or we will get these numbers once the Parks Master Plan is completed?
We'd probably leave that to the discretion of the city manager. If you would like us to come back when we have key milestone, you know, figures, I think we're happy to do that.
And the importance of this topic, as we reach those milestones, or this information is provided to us, I think it's incumbent upon us now to convey that information to you as well. So, when you're out in the community, you have a full understanding of how this project is moving forward, and how and what those conversations need to be when it is, when they are out in the community.
Perfect. And then, the other thing, and I appreciate that, I think having the information is always important. The other thing, have you guys thought about, in terms of the numbers that you guys have identified, pointing out, I don't know if it's in a map, where actually those needs are in terms of the monies? Like, where is it that we really need to put these $112 million? Have we looked at it geographically?
Yes. It is by geography, by park. So, yeah, we're doing all of that work.
Have we mapped it out? So, you guys have mapped it out?
Right now, it's not, it's not mapped, but it could be.
I think that would be a great tool and also a great visual, so that when we are making decisions here on this dais, we are looking at and being intentional about addressing the challenges that exist within our park system. So, I would.
To give you an example, of the 112, I think my, if I recall, 48 million is associated with just the replacement and repair of irrigation systems.
And have we, I'm assuming that we do every year, look at grant dollars, because I know that at the state level, you know, and when, because they're encouraging us to conserve water.
We just, for example, just with the help of DPU, are applying for water conservation grants that allows to buy some smart controllers. But the underlying issues are the pipes or piping for the irrigation system for probably all of our parks, except for maybe the most recently built parks, are in need to be replaced. And I think the irrigation system was on a 10- or 15-year turn. I think that's stretching it, but imagine, most of our irrigation systems are probably 30 or 40 years old and have never been replaced. So, there's where, again, it's not real sexy stuff, when you replace irrigation systems or bathrooms, but it is the reality of when you own anything, whether it's a city hall or a park, there are assets or sub-assets that, over time, have to be replaced. And what this does is just shows you what the annualized cost is of maintaining those systems or assets, such as irrigation systems. So, we've talked about replacing the irrigation system at Roding Park, at Woolworth Park, and then you get into all the other irrigation systems. That number clocks up real fast.
So, are there grants, though, at the state level? I would imagine that there would be some grants that we could apply for.
And we have been.
Okay. And then, do we have enough staff capacity to write these grants?
Well, I would say yes, because right now, we've been very successful, and we've been partnering with DPU, for example, on this most recent grant. But I can tell you, Irma, who's sitting in the audience, if there's a grant out there to be found, sometimes she finds it before we even, or anybody else knows about it. But there are dollars available.
Council members, one of the, one other thing that I wanted to add with regards to the irrigation grants is that there's always a 50-50 match. So, if we want to tap into a million dollars, we better come up with the other million dollars to match that, and that's always a concern. So, unless we get creative, as we did in the last go-around, where we already had projects that were already incorporated and paid for by existing grants, then we would match those dollars to apply for those additional funding.
Thank you, Irma, for sharing that information. I think it's important for us to know, because as we go into budget, right, figuring out what dollars we're gonna set aside, so that we are able to be competitive and say, the city of Fresno is putting up their own dollars to match up and really, you know, double or triple the amount of resources that we can then put into these parks. Again, thank you for the information. Appreciate it.
You know, Bruce, and your team, I love you guys, you know that, but I'm in shock. I mean, this is shocking reality, and I think as a community, we look toward that vision bucket, which is healthy, and that's our goal, but in reality, we're in bucket one, and it's gonna be difficult to come to grips with that. But as everyone here knows, we are the council that confronts issues, and we will figure this out, and we'll get that bucket drained and get back in reality, because that's the council we are, and we've been showing, at least for the last four years. And with this team, and thank you all, with this team and this leadership, I think we're gonna be able to make headway, and we'll get this behind us as a team, as we go forward, as we confront these issues. So, thanks for everything you've done the last four years. I'm here for four more. Look forward to working with you on each and every day, and you're a great group. We can do this. It's just gonna take good leadership and reality, the shock of reality. So, thank you all very much. I'm gonna have to leave. I've got a medical appointment. Thank you.
Staff? Anybody? Sophia? So, one of the things that we see, trying to be creative here, that I was just thinking as we were talking about this, we've seen adopt a highway, where people pick sections of the highway, try to keep it clean. I don't think we're very successful here in Fresno. We've seen it other places. But why couldn't we establish some kind of adopt a park that the community would get involved in, the rotaries would get involved in, that would help maintain parks, perhaps invest capital, projects in there, paint, fix playground facilities, perhaps even do maintenance? And I wonder if we did enact such a program, a citywide program, how much of that cost would be reduced by having such a program and highlighting it and really encouraging people? And then, I think in District Six, I couldn't imagine that we couldn't get people to adopt the park and have some kind of program in place to maintain their community park.
Good afternoon, council. Sean Schaefer with the Parks Department. Under the Mayor Swearengen regime, we absolutely instituted a Adopt the Park program, and we have continued it, and it is still in process right now, but we have 80 parks that are available for adoption. We have about 50% of those parks that are adopted currently. But I think it was a very helpful program for us to get through the Great Recession, supplementing and enhancing the work of our folks here, but we absolutely do have an Adopt the Park program.
All right. Can you tell me about that? Because I've not heard that it exists. Where has it worked? How has it been successful? Where hasn't it been, and how much costs have been saved when parks have been adopted?
Yeah. What we do is, we look for businesses, schools, churches, faith-based organizations, and it's supplement-enhanced adoption, six months to a year is what we're looking for on this. And we're looking for low limb pruning, weeding, edging, trash pickup, graffiti removal, and then we manage these. We have a team of folks within our section in our department, and then oversees these groups. They report the hours back to us, so they give us three to six hours a month of park adoption out there. But to be clear, other than our large targeted cleanups, which we've done with the Mormon group, Mormon Helping Hands, most of it is supplement and enhanced type of work that we do out there.
What do you mean by that? It's supplemented?
Well, we're not, we're not changing out sprinklers, or, you know, repairing roofs, or getting into the duck, the duck work, or anything like that. So, painting and the other things that I had mentioned there.
Okay.
So, if I could, council members. So, the program, as Sean indicated, we started this about three, four years ago, and we have community groups that'll go out on weekends, and they pick up the trash, they'll clean weeds, bring out weed ears, pick rakes, clean out flower beds. There are some groups that we have entered into an agreement with to help maintain a particular facility. The Fig Garden Loop Baseball Diamond was adopted by the Cal Ripken, the Garden Cal Ripken. They are responsible for maintaining that ball field, cutting the grass, letting us know when the irrigation isn't working, picking up the trash. They literally run and operate that ball field. In exchange, they get first right of refusal to that ball field, and then that augments our ongoing maintenance costs, or reduces that cost, because city crews or private contractors no longer require to maintain that particular ball field. We do the same thing with Alraca, with Sin Cal Baseball. They're also operating, they have a similar agreement, where they're out maintaining those ball fields and the park area, again, picking up trash and things of that nature as part of an adoption program. And we can provide you contact information and what parks are available. If there's a group that wants to adopt Selma Lane or Todd Beamer.
Absolutely.
We absolutely would welcome participation from the neighborhood to help us maintain those parks in your district.
Well, that sounds phenomenal, and that's the kind of thing I'm talking about, and I wonder, like, the park you just mentioned off of Fig Garden Loop, how much does that save by the fact that they're doing that? I mean, and how much would it impact, let's say, some of the numbers where you got $120 million? That's gotta be some significant.
Well, if I can remember off the top of my head, I think we calculated the ongoing cost per acre for a ball field is at $12,000 or so a year, but that includes water. So, I'm gonna wager the price, in that case, I'm looking at Tony. What do you think, about $7,000, $8,000 in landscape maintenance and trash pickup?
Savings, you mean?
Mm-hmm. Right. Than a passive green space.
You should probably talk into the mic, so people can hear who are listening in on the.
Yeah, so what Tony's saying is that we went through analysis of, a passive green space area such as Woolworth Park doesn't require the same level of maintenance as a sports field. So, we have costs that range depending on the particular application. So, Tony, go ahead, finish your thought.
Yeah, just, sports field require a little bit higher level of maintenance because of the use. Where a passive green space is pretty much a, like a once-a-week.
Right.
Maintenance service. Sports fields can range anywhere from two to three services a week, depending, like the sports complex, the softball diamonds require higher level of service.
And I think we calculated that sports complex, it was about 12. And I think we calculated that sports complex, it was about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars per acre. That included watering that field, but most of it was labor to cut the grass and maintain it. So I'm guessing that the Fig Garden adoption is generating at least seven to eight thousand dollars a year in savings by the fact they're cutting the grass and just picking up the trash and things like that.
Correct.
Well, I mean, I think that's a fantastic way of looking at this, and, you know, I think all of us in all of our districts have parks. I wonder if there's not something we can be doing to help facilitate this, to get these parks adopted? And if you're saving seven thousand dollars on just this kind of thing, how much more cost savings would there be in all of our parks? So, I mean, that's a big number, a hundred and twenty million dollars, and I wonder if there's things that we can do, and we all can do, to highlight, we want parks to be adopted, come up with some plan for how one would adopt a park, what would be involved in adopting a park, so we, the city, can save some money and also get our parks maintained and taken care of.
Right. We do need to re-energize this program. Over the last year or so, the attendance for the weekend Green and Clean or Adopt a Park, those numbers have really fallen. So right now, we're not seeing a big benefit unless we get an organized group, but just...
There are people in our community who are always looking for things to get, to be involved, some ways to get involved. I get calls from that, I know there are people who want to be involved, and being involved in parks, I don't think they'd probably find something that they'd be more interested in doing than helping, and being in a park and helping maintain a park.
And I agree, I mean, it's not guaranteed, guaranteed labor force, but it does help, you know, with doing the things that we can't get to.
So if you have the people, we have the need.
Well, we, I think, we also need, though, to do a media campaign to educate people that we want that. I mean, I didn't know that the city had this going on, and I pay attention to what's happening in the city, I wasn't aware of it. I'm sure there are a lot of people who aren't aware that we have an Adopt a Park program in the City of Fresno. And so I think we need to somehow come up with a real plan, if we really want to reduce that number, and I know we do, to adopt a park. I mean, I think we can be very innovative and creative, but we, the City of Fresno, has to get the message out that we're looking to get our parks adopted, and what does that mean? What does it mean to adopt a park? What's involved in adopting a park? Because I know people in District Six love their parks, and they want to keep them safe, clean, maintained, and ongoing for many years to come. And I know people in the community want to be involved in every district in taking care of their neighborhood parks. But I think we've got to, since there is a plan in place, or a program in place, we've got to do a better job of advertising it, and we, I think, maybe have to formalize exactly what's involved in adopting a park, and what kind of criteria do we want, what do we need, what's the help we need? Because I know there are people who want to help.
We would be glad to come over to your council office and explain the program.
Yeah, but it's not, I'm not just talking about District Six, I'm talking about, we need to get serious about a whole citywide endeavor. This isn't about just one park or two parks in District Six. I mean, we want to deal with a hundred and twenty million dollar maintenance and expenditures, then we all have to get serious, we, the city, all have to get serious about an adopt-a-program and getting our parks taken care of.
Okay. Sure. Okay.
If I may just add, the number that we're referring to right now, the hundred and twenty, has nothing to do yet with our maintenance piece, that will be next, where we identify those gaps. And then these types of things would be, perhaps, those gap analysis would show, these may be programs that could offset those. So the one twenty, just to reiterate, is the existing assets that we have within a ten-year life cycle, that's what that one twenty means.
Right, and that's meaning like replacing things in...
Right, but the Adopt a Park program is more of the trash pickup and the maintenance piece, which is our second piece of this park master plan update, so it'll be...
But what I'm saying is, the Adopt a Park could also be about capital expenditures. There are rotaries that are willing to replace playgrounds, basketball courts, I mean, it's not just maintenance, it depends on how we define it, and how the city wants the help from people, because there are plenty of people who want to help, whether it's capital expenditures or maintenance.
Correct.
Thank you very much, staff, by the way.
All right. Bruce, I'm going to ask you this question first. So Bruce, I actually need to revisit, although we've heard it a couple times, I need to revisit for myself the definition of bucket one, okay? And could you do me a favor, pretend that the city hall building is a park? And so what is replacement versus maintenance versus expansion and all of that stuff? So give me some real-world examples.
So for a building like this, in a perfect world, when we are designing this building, we should have looked at at least two buckets. One, the cost of operating this building, and probably would have thought, well, maybe I don't need a ceiling that's nearly as tall as it is, because it costs a lot of money to heat a lot of air that's not providing anything other than an architectural benefit.
Yeah.
The other thing I would be looking at is what are the life cycle costs of this building? So the day that this building, and we cut the ribbon, how much money should we be setting aside in order to replace a roof that maybe has a twenty or twenty-five year life?
Okay, and you're calling that maintenance, that...
I call that life cycle.
Life?
Life cycle or replacement costs.
Life cycle replacement.
Here's a good example, we just replaced carpet.
Yes.
We just replaced all the carpets and seats and back, and we're, so when we opened this building up, we should have said, okay, the average, the life expectancy of that carpet is eight years. The future replacement cost of that carpet is X. Take X, divide that by eight, calculate in for inflation, and that's how much money should have been set aside to replace the carpet. That does not include the cost of having Steve Brandow's Carpet Cleaning Company coming in.
Blue Ribbon Carpet Care.
Huh?
Blue Ribbon Carpet.
Blue Ribbon Carpet Care, five stars on Yelp. That does not include the cost of having the carpets cleaned during...
Eight years.
That eight years. So when we look at that bucket one, it is essentially the amount of money that you need to set aside in order to replace different things within a building or within a park based on the life expectancy of that component. Because there's also the theory, and it's not a theory, but it's the diminishing return. The older or longer you put off the replacement of an asset, the more expensive it eventually gets to either operate or replace that. A street is a good example. You can continue to fix potholes, but if you're not doing preventive maintenance, which is like slurry sealing that street, and you eventually just get to the point where the pothole and the water gets underneath that road, you erode the base, you may have extended the life by not replacing it, but the cost now is greater than what it would have cost you if you just had maintained it during the life. So those things are, again, this is based on assuming the maximum life of those assets, whether it's irrigation systems, or a roof, or carpet. Once you get beyond that point, then it just gets more expenses as time goes on. So those, I think, I hope, explains the difference between having the carpet cleaned versus the carpet replaced.
Okay, it does. So in bucket one, is operating cost and life cycle cost?
No.
Nope? And that's not operating?
That's just replacement.
Okay. So replacement as things go bad, right? I can't read that. Okay. And then bucket two?
We need to buy new monitors.
Yeah, and then...
For bucket two is, now I'm looking at my building, or I'm looking at my park, are there improvements that I can make that, because I'm at the end of the life of that particular component, can I replace that component or that system that is more efficient than the ones I had before, that provide some value? So irrigation, maybe I put in recycled water, maybe for a while that reduces my cost of water, or I put in a smart controller, therefore, because it's a smart controller, I use less water. We just did the selling arena, where we had all the old lights in the selling arena, and they were hodgepodge of different brands and different colors, and we replaced all those lights in the arena with LED lights. And that replacement not only reduced the ongoing cost of having to maintain those lights, because the life cycle replacement now, rather be in five years or eight years, is like fifteen years, but it also reduced the cost of having someone to go up there and change the bulb during the course of that period. And it reduced our energy costs to the point where, within three or four years, that initial capital outlay was able to pay itself back, and then everything after that was, is basically savings.
So those are upgrades that, are they generally upgrades that make economic sense? Then the examples you're using are upgrades that make economic sense, like replace lighting with new LED lighting that lasts longer? Or are they just upgrades for, you know, other types of upgrades?
Well, you have upgrades, so if I replace a pool, I replace a pool, and I might get some improvements by putting in a newer filtration system. But how much of a benefit, that goes to the, basically, return on investment. If I have an investment I have to make, I want to look at, well, if I do this, if I replace the same old lights that I say, and it's going to go out every five years, but if I spend a little bit more, that light, that new light, that LED light's going to last fifteen years, that goes back to the return, that increment between just replacing what I have versus going maybe a little bit different, different product, that has a longer life. Then you look at that additional capital in that payback period.
Okay, so some of these improvements really make economic sense in a way they're even like an investment themselves.
Right, which would then help reduce the cost of bucket one.
Inside of, right, because they reduce the cost inside of bucket one. So in bucket two, where we're looking at these improvements, do we have any way of grading the, so when the company is going out, looking at the different location sites, taking a inventory of needs that need, things that need to happen, considering upgrades, is there a way of weighing which upgrade pays economic dividends, like replacing lights versus...
Yes.
Yeah.
And we haven't gotten to that point yet. I thought one of the other interesting recommendations to reduce your ongoing costs was eliminate the fences around your parks, because you no longer have to go back and replace that fence in the future.
Right.
And that savings, then, while it's not necessarily a savings such as replacing something that's more efficient, it's eliminating that ongoing replacement cost by taking a, approaching the problem a little bit differently and say, well, I can replace this fence and incur that cost of replacement, or maybe, from a community standpoint, just taking the fence out completely has a value to it in and above just the replacement cost or repair cost of that fence. So those are the kind of things, I think, that are both, when we talk about sustainability, it's those things that you can do to improve the overall cost of operation, but maybe also those things that reduce some of your costs that are more strategic in nature, but open, have a community benefit that you can't necessarily quantify, other than the future replacement cost of that fence around your park.
Okay, cool. So, and I'm going to, I'm going to meet with you a couple more times to get, you know, even more examples. I want to really understand that, because I think that's really valuable, I like where you're going with that. Because we can do some upgrades that put us in a better position, councils in the future in better position than we are now, just from the upgrades that we make, okay? Now, I want to hit a couple of other items. So, Sophia, do we have an exam, do we have a, do you have a copy of the flyer where we are engaging the community and asking them, the survey that we're putting out in the community?
I don't have a copy with me, but it's been online.
Yeah, okay, it's online, beautiful. I actually, I actually took that survey, and I'm trying to remember the different questions on that survey. My guess is, if council begins to think economically about the outcome that we know is necessary, then we should survey based on that outcome that we're looking for. So I think we should survey people. Inside of the survey that they take, they should realize what their true options are versus a lot of hypothetical options that we have no way, like, I don't know if it's bucket three, yeah, bucket three looks pretty visionary. But we, our surveys should be built around buckets one and two, and maintaining what we have, and keeping what we have in viable condition. That's, so that's just an opinion, Sophia, that's just coming from District Two. I think that our surveys should not hold out something that is unattainable, okay? Without addressing, so I think our surveys should reflect the kind of intensity that you're talking about with bucket one and bucket two. Because when we, so here's what happens, and my thoughts are, people gravitate towards bucket three. Bucket three is fun. Bucket three is everybody's fantasy, including mine, and people think, man, we want beauty, and they visited some park somewhere else around the world, and they think, oh, we need that here. And so I really want to, I'm going to visit that survey, I'll get a copy of that from being online, and I want to make sure that we are not misleading the public on the value of bucket three.
And that's exactly why we're here today. And until two weeks ago, when we were talking about future community outreach, which is why I said, you may want to hold off making a decision until you start getting a full appreciation of what we're talking about. Because I agree, this information needs to be part of the survey so that people have a full understanding and appreciation of what we are going, what we're dealing with. You know, bucket three is one of those things that, are you willing to fund bucket one, bucket two, and bucket three? And therefore, then what's the cost of that, and are you willing to fund that? Because as we've already talked about, this first bucket is a pretty, pretty big number.
Yeah.
But again, it's not a number that never existed. It's a number we have, as an organization for whatever reason, chose to ignore or not acknowledge.
So Bruce, in the four years that I've been on council, I've voted, we've had three opportunities to bring new parks to the City of Fresno.
One in District...
One, District Three, District Seven.
Mm-hmm.
I'm surrounded by new parks, but, so are you saying, Bruce, in my four years, that I should not have voted for those three new parks?
No, what I'm saying is that every time we vote to build something, we need to acknowledge, and we have been over the last four years, there are costs associated with this. We put millions of dollars into parks for deferred capital. This council has done that, and you're a part of that.
Yes.
You've voted to put money into parking garages, because you've recognized that, as has the rest of the council. You have voted to increase the rent at the MSC, because, again, this is a cost that we are finally beginning to acknowledge as an expense that's going to come home to roost. We have built three parks, which goes back to, before we start talking about building any more parks, we need to look at this as expense, because as I pointed out, as soon as you put money into bucket three, as soon as bucket three is empty, in other words, you built a park, you increase the liability or the obligation in bucket one.
Yeah.
And that is a conversation I think we need to have, and we still need to have with the community. Because when we get into other improvements that we've invested in, this is a real expense. You heard the folks this morning from PSC and the Grizzlies talk about the half a million dollars they're putting into the concession equipment. That's because the concession equipment that's out there now, which was put in by Ovations, is at the end of its life, and Ovations doesn't want to write a check for that equipment because they thought they're probably not going to be around to recoup that capital investment. So this other group is now putting a half a million dollars into that equipment, because it too has reached the end of its life, and it has to be replaced. So whether it's a park, or a stadium, or a convention center, these are expenses that this organization needs to finally come to grip with, and we are, but it comes at the potential expense of other priorities that we have always focused on.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's why, when we go out to the community, there needs to be, that's my reality check comment, is about, I appreciate bucket three, and that's great, and it's, the Parkway Trust is grappling with that same issue right now, as you know, because you're a member. And go build the Parkway, and you can build it in the Riverbalm, and it'd be wonderful. And go build the Parkway, and you can build it in the Riverbalm, and it'd be a wonderful asset for our community. But there's no money for bucket one, which is going to be a challenge.
Yes.
So as we go out to the community, I'm just hoping that this information, and then when we get into the O and M cost and the programming costs, gives us as a community a clear understanding of what we want to do, and then what are we willing to invest in.
When, these last three parks, and the order that we, that, that they were approved while I was on council, was the big park in district one, and then Martin Ray Riley in district seven, and then the recent park downtown Fresno, which is a really good example because we just cut, the ribbon was just cut, I think, in December, right? So when we planned for that park, did we incorporate a finance mechanism for buckets one and two? Or, I mean, are we learning, I guess, or, or have we learned just since that park?
Those parks were already slated to be built, there are already commitments made to the community. If you recall, council member Zhang at the time, even tried to get the neighborhood to support the, the creation of a CFD. They didn't get very far, but we had already made commitments to the communities that these parks were coming. The same thing applies to Figard and Loop Park. Nobody talked about what the cost was, nobody talked about what these costs were for Todd Beamer, and we built those. So what I'm trying to convey is that before we go out to the community and continue this dialogue, unlike the past, we need to have this reality check so that people understand that, well, how much is it going to cost if I add to number three? Because it then impacts number one.
Okay.
And maybe I'm not really inclined to do anything with number three, because I think number one is far more important.
Right. Well, I think, okay, so we're on the same page, I think, according to your answer, we're on the same page. I, so I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna revisit that survey, but I think, I think talking about number three puts us in a precarious position right now. I, I, I think we're more responsible to talk about buckets one and two. So that's just my opinion, but I'm going to vet that a little bit more, because I don't know for sure. So I have a couple of other thoughts, and then I'll turn the mic over to somebody else. What about, in the 48 million of the 112 million, 48 million for irrigation, right? You mentioned that, 48 of the 112 is for irrigation. How much of that is labor of the 48 million?
I'm good, but I'm not that good.
Okay, you're good, but not that good. All right, because, so.
Are you asking for me to bid it? Because I'm going to mark it up by a little bit more.
Well, well, we know that labor costs are pretty substantial in, in almost all.
Yeah, and I'm not sure what they use for a labor rate. Sophia, if you could take a shot, if you know the answer, but I'd be swagging on a good day.
Actually, it's, it's all figured into these numbers, but we couldn't break it out for you right now.
Okay, well, we can, we have time, you know, we have time, I appreciate that. And where, so one of the concepts where I really agree with some of the comments made by Councilman Bretafeld, and he, and so he kind of went on the adopt a park model. And Councilman Bretafeld, I'm not, I'm a little bit, I've kind of seen little hodgepodge attempts at that, and they, they haven't seemed to work so far. Now, I don't think these folks want to tell you that, because they want to encourage it, okay? But I, I'll pay more attention, and I'll revisit it with you, but I think it's, really hasn't paid a, a lot of dividend. But, so here's where I would take your comments and where you inspired me, was can, can, is there any type of mechanism in catching up this lost ground, incorporating private companies to help us revitalize these parks? And in a way, similar to what we saw this morning with the vote for the new contract at the baseball stadium. The new contract, these folks want to come in, run the contract, they're, they're willing to bring in initial investment. So I have a couple of thoughts about that. This isn't privatizing of the parks, that's not what I'm talking about. But what I am talking about is allowing the privatizing of park maintenance. And then inside of that, look at several different models. We've, we've tried that in the past on certain parks, and people tell me that it really didn't save the city money, okay? But I think we could look at other models of privatizing the parks. So here's one thought that I have. This is just thinking, this is just creative thinking, I have no, nothing to substantiate that this could work. But could we trade the naming rights of any individual park for maintenance of that park? If a company, if Verizon or any other Fresno business wants to come in and say, you know, for this nine acre park right here, if we can call that Verizon Park, we'll maintain that park. I mean, I want to think, I want to start thinking outside of the box, early on in this game, rather than.
I'm beginning to wonder if my conference room has been bugged lately. I've been recently engaged with a company, as you recall, council, you set money aside for naming rights, concept, or a strategy for the Fresno Convention Center.
Yes.
We did get a proposal. I met with the representatives last, actually, this week. Almost to per, perbatim is what we talked about. Naming rights for just about anything and everything that we own. So I'm putting together a list of assets that we own. In other words, rather than just focusing on the convention center, we're looking at everything.
Okay.
Other ideas such as approaching the local dealerships, that the official truck of Chantilly Stadium is the Ford F-150 Raptor. And allow the dealership to put a truck at, 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 every other game or whatever. My point is, tot lots, which are $50,000 on a good day, the one we're putting at Bullwood Park this year is $200,000. If someone wants to write us a check to, to, to replace a tot lot, I'd be more than happy to name it after them.
Okay.
For a period of time.
Yeah, sure.
Not forever. Because naming rights that we've had before, they give you one check and then they get that name forever and ever and ever. So we are looking at everything to the, who gets to sell soda, community centers, and police headquarters, up to including the naming rights on BRT. I mean, we literally threw everything and anything into that basket, because then that basket funnels back to the general fund.
Okay. So you're acknowledging publicly that.
It's a good idea.
I've come up with a brilliant idea, and I said it first. Tim, I said it first. On the BRT, can we?
I thought of it, but you thought, you said it first.
We thought about it independently, I don't have your office bugged. On the BRT specifically, is there any way Councilman Olivier can get that named, Olivier's BRT?
I don't have any money.
Well, you're out of, you're out of luck then. All right, that's, I'm good for now, thank you.
I want to thank staff for their presentation. I think these are very sobering numbers that we're just beginning to wrap our, our head around. But I, I want to just talk a little bit, and, I mean, and this is credit to, to Bruce, those years that, we actually did do a lot of those, adopt the park. I mean, I think it was 2010, I was here as staff, and we were going through the recession and the cutbacks, and we saw our Parks Department decimated. They went from hundreds of employees to about 30 or 40. And those were really dark, dark days. So we have done a lot of those. I mean, I think we were at the point where we actually had nonprofits take over some of our community centers. And, and a lot of them have done a great job, and some have not done so well. So we have explored a lot of these options. This is the part that I think we're, we're kind of dancing around, where we still haven't came up with, how are we going to pay for this? That is, I think, at the heart of this conversation that, that we're having. And, and we are going to have to have an all hands on deck approach, where we do invite, you know, CBOs and faith-based organizations in our community. And, you know, this was a very contentious issue for, for, for my district last, last year. And so we had a lot of groups and organizations that, that came and they wanted parks, and I think everybody here is in agreement that we all 100% support parks. But the question is, how do we pay for that? How do we pay for the cost? How do we pay for the maintenance? And, and these numbers, I think, are, are going to guide that conversation, because, you know, I saw a lot of organizations come here and, and say that they wanted to be part of this and, and commit. And there was even a JPA that was formed. And I think one of the things that we need to get is, we need to get some financial commitments on what that partnership looks like, right? Which, it's going to be an opportunity for the city, the different organizations to, in essence, put your money where your mouth is. And it's going to be a big message that this council sends as to what we prioritize. Do we prioritize parks? Do we prioritize other departments? And, and I'm looking forward to that, because I think, especially in, in certain parts of town, and we all know that, you know, one of my colleagues' district is, is considered a park desert. We had, you know, where Reading and Beyond took over Mosqueta, and, and some of the groups in southwest Fresno took over that community center. And then we had Inspiration Park that, you know, still doesn't have some access points for that. But I think, you know, at the end of the day, we, we all are in consensus that we support parks. But again, how, how are we going to pay for that? And, I mean, Bruce, you talked about the sinking fund and, and how we go about allocating those, those dollars. I mean, there, there were conversations out there, and I remember being privy to these, where there were some nonprofits that were willing to install solar in some of our community centers, but they wanted long-term lease agreements, right? And, and so what does that look like for, for our other community centers? So I, for one, am looking forward to, but I think this needs to be a community-led and community-sustained effort, as far as our parks, what our Parks Department looks like. They've done a, a great job. We talked about, you know, when life gives you lemons, you make lemonades. You guys have been making lemonade for a long time. And, and I just wanted to acknowledge our, our Parks Department and Bruce, you, where, I think you were wearing like four hats at the time. You were city manager slash finance slash parks.
That's right. That's right, you still have the hats, the hat for the Parks Department. But this was very informative, but I want to thank our folks for, for giving us these numbers. I think one of the things that I'm starting to slowly realize here is that these three buckets are going to get pretty heavy. And we're going to have to really look at what our priority is, because there, there's an old saying in budgeting that says, don't tell me what you value, show me your budget and I'll tell you what you value. And I think that, that's about to be really, really tested here this year. So, thank you. With that.
All right. Well, Burbaines is punched up, but since he's not here, I'm, I've been listening to everything, and I, I want to say a few words. First off, I'd like to thank staff for their work on this, on the bucket strategy, and also on, on, on the continued work that, that you're doing. We have the best grant writer in the valley right there, in the form of Irma, who, who wrote a grant to, to bring a new park to district seven, the city of Fresno, and I mean that. Just, just to kind of put things in perspective for everyone, I mean, I don't want to say I knew this first, I knew, I know more I knew this first, but city manager and I were having this discussion six years ago, when, when I came into office. And, and we were in the first go-around for the, the Prop 84 grant to get the, and then, and then we didn't get that, so then we entered the second round and we were able to get the, the grant. That's when Bruce sat me down and said, all right, we need to, we need to talk. The administration didn't want to build that park originally, because they were holding out for a sinking fund to go along with that park. And they said, well, if you can, if you can raise money to help us maintain that park, well, then maybe we can begin talking about it. So I went out and I talked to some, some corporate, corporations and some groups, and I raised, what, 30, $40,000, 50, 30, whatever. Just to kind of put things in perspective, the grant we got for Martin Ray Riley to construct a new park in an underserved neighborhood was, what, $3.4 million? $3.4 million. We built an entire park with a splash pad and bathrooms and a shade structure and a soccer field, a fantastic amenity for, for that neighborhood. That's 3.4 million. We owe $48 million on sprinklers. Like, let that sink in. $48 million to even water the grass that we have in our parks. And I appreciate every idea that my council colleagues have come up with. I appreciate that we can go out and raise money from corporate sponsors. I appreciate that we can have churches adopt the parks. But the reality is, is that we are in a lot of trouble when it comes to parks. The, the ideas that I've heard put forward tonight, such as privatizing parks maintenance, which I support, going out after, after grant money to, to replace sprinklers, I support. Having churches adopt parks and naming rights for parks, I support. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're in over $100 million. And I think that we have very resourceful and fantastic people in our Parks Department who are creative and forward-thinking all the time. But we still haven't built our Parks Department back from what it was before the Great Recession, and, and we quit hiring Parks employees, and we let Parks employees go. And so what I'm saying is, and also if we have another recession, which is inevitable, we just elected a mayor that wants to hire 1,000 police officers. How much does it, what do we have now, city manager, 800 officers, 760?
It's 805.
805.
Budgeted.
How much does, how much do 200 police officers cost?
You're approaching $20 million.
$20 million. So, I mean, it is, what we do here is about priorities, and what we do here is about, you know, prioritizing one thing over another, but I think that the consensus is, is that law enforcement and public safety is, is what this organization does first and foremost. So I think in terms of parks, the, just the, the hands-on experience that I have had in, in my district, we have a lot of problems at, at the Seventh District's parks. And I know that you've jumped through hoops and go crazy to try and alleviate the, the problems that we have in, in our parks. And I know that you do, city manager. And I think that the, I just don't see millions of dollars in a windfall for maintaining the parks that we have. So I, you know, I, I think that, just in terms of, of what we do, we can chase after grants, and we can chase after, you know, we can do a sponsorship for a park, but I think it's budget dust in terms of this, this crater that is our Parks Department. So I think that as a, as a, as a body and as a department and, and as a community, we have to look at something very drastic and revolutionary. I think that we need to address this problem by exploring ideas like creating a Parks Authority, spinning our Parks Department out on its own, so it can have its own elected board of people to make decisions in terms of maintaining our parks. Privatizing our parks may be an answer. But I don't think that with the, the budgetary reality of this organization now facing a recession, which is coming, I don't think that the budgetary reality bodes well for, for hanging on to the parks. And we can't hang on to the parks because it's a disservice to the people who use them when they go to the parks and see them in such a state of disrepair. So here we are, we've come back from the recession, we're, we're out now and the economy is growing, and, and we still haven't returned our Parks Department to the way it was. We still don't have programming at Lafayette Park and, and others the way we did. It's still a ministry that's running that. So I think that, that we should do something drastic and revolutionary and, and look toward the future of, look toward a future when the city of Fresno has spun our Parks Department out into its own authority with its own elected officials and its own, so it can set its agenda. And I think that's what the reality is. I think in the meantime, to, to retain folks, to, to go door-to-door and have community meetings and ask people if they want a splash pad or if they want a roller coaster, I don't, I think that that's giving false hope to the people that go to those meetings because of the reality that says we are tens of millions of dollars from even operating a park system that's, that's as clean as it should be and as healthy as it should be. So that's, that's all I have to say, but, I mean, I, I, this is, this is my vision of, of what the reality is. And, and I appreciate everything that you do, I appreciate colleagues' ideas, but I think that something drastic and revolutionary is needed if we're going to deliver the kind of park system to our neighbors that, that, that we want to. Yes?
May I, and I appreciate your comments. And right now, we're talking a lot about the costs of, of owning our parks. Depending on if you're just looking at a P, a profit-loss statement, or you're looking at the value of a park as, as far as a community asset. But let's not lose sight that today we're talking about parks. Next week, we're coming back with a similar assessment and the cost of replacing a public safety communication system. And that number is going to cause this council pause. And so these studies have been commissioned over the last couple of years in order for us to recognize that while we have ongoing needs, and people come in here on any given Thursday asking us to provide more of this or more of that. You're in community meetings. We need more money put into streets to maintain the streets. We need more police. We need more firefighters. We need more, I mean, we can go down parks, sidewalks, drainage in neighborhoods that don't even have. don't even have drainage. My point is, is that these other costs that are associated with supporting all these services, such as police and fire, have to be recognized and addressed in, at the same time that we're trying to meet the needs of a community with a lot of needs. So today, we're about parks. Next week, we're going to be about public safety. And again, when you see the number and the costs associated with replacing the communication system for the public safety for fire and police, it will cause you pause.
So, City Manager, do you see, do you see a way out? Are we going to be able to claw our way out of 112 million dollars in deferred maintenance? In an organization that's just scraping money together to buy radios?
I think that goes back to, again, the need for a very broad and inclusive community outreach effort. Because it comes back to, if I don't even know about an Adopt a Park program, how in the world are you going to ask me to weigh in on, how do I address this issue? The community has to be engaged in the solution. And they have to buy into the solution, because they will help set the priorities of this building.
So, quick question, is the, is, are these numbers and the bucket strategy going to be presented to members of the public?
Yes, that was the whole.
Right, okay. So they are, is it going to be, make a wish list about what you want parks to contain?
Well, as Councilmember Versori pointed out, they can, they can, I'm not going to discourage anyone to create a community vision. As long as the community understands what they have to do in order for that vision to be fulfilled, and they buy into the strategy to get that, turn that vision into reality. There may be, after looking at this information, as well as other information that will be coming forward, a decision made amongst the community that, well, adding new parks, adding a 50-acre soccer complex, being nice to have, but we can't afford it. So if we can't afford that, maybe what we should be shooting for, the vision should be, we just want to make sure that whatever we already have is safe, clean, and well-maintained. And that's why we brought this information forward today, because I do think it will temper the conversation when we're out in the community. It's that reality check that I talked about earlier.
Fair enough. All right, screen's clear. Thank you, staff. Is there something you want to add to wrap it all up, or?
Thanks, Council President. This is Sophia, again, from Darm. I just wanted to add just a little detail to Bucket Two. If, you know, when this comes back to you, it's also our understanding that in addition to those assets that could be replaced more efficiently in Bucket Two, also, we would add assets that could, that might be upgraded to better meet the needs of the community as identified by the community in a given park. So, for example, a tennis court no longer really used by the community, but we've heard through our outreach that it's basketball that's really desired. So a change, you know, in like-for-like type asset, but an upgrade could land in Bucket Two, and I just didn't want you to be surprised by that. Okay? Yeah, other than that, no more comments. Thanks.
And with that, I don't believe we have anything else on the agenda for this afternoon. And that concludes the council meeting. Thank you all. I wanted to also mention that we are adjourning in memory of Fred Clark and former Council Member Joe Williams today. Thank you.